Thank you, everyone. It is Wednesday, September 17th, 7:07 PM. This is the regular meeting of the full city council. And the clerk will call the roll.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Graney?
Here.
Jordane?
Here.
McGrath Smith?
Here.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Here.
Ocasio?
Here.
I Rivera?
Here.
Jay Rivera? Sullivan?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city council.
Thank you, everyone. We are just a little housekeeping. We are being recorded right now on Zoom. We are also being livestreamed through the city's public access station. This meeting is being translated into Spanish. And I think that was all of those items. And then because we do have, Councilor Anderson Burgos is on Zoom, so I'm going to entertain a motion to take a roll call vote that for the purposes of this meeting would be applicable to all motions to receive, to refer items to committee, remove items from the table, place items on the table, package items together, comply with items, or suspend the rolls unless there is an objection.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And, all right, we're gonna head into public comment because we don't have any public hearings scheduled for this evening. For those of you who are not, who are not familiar with the public comment process, I have this list that you are able to sign up for and sign in to speak this evening. I'll go through the list. And then if, each person will have two minutes. So my job tonight is to keep track of time. And I know that things have been, for whatever reason, getting a little wild during public comment. And I, we're just, we're not gonna do that tonight. It's gonna be okay. And my job is to keep track of time, so whoever signs up, that is, you can rest assured I'll be doing that. Halfway through, as usual, I will hold up the one-minute sign. And then when you're done, I'm gonna hold up the time sign, because I am trying not to interrupt you and throw you off. So with that, do I have anyone online? Okay. I will have Claire come up to the microphone. And I already know that I'm not gonna be able to read the second one, but we will get there. We'll cross that bridge when we get there. Just make sure that the top microphone is, that's correct.
I think, check. Okay. Thank you.
And hold on one second, because I'm just gonna get my timer up.
All right.
Go ahead.
Let me, okay. Good evening. My name is Claire. I am a resident of Holyoke. Going to refrain from further giving my personal private information to my government, because that is a right that's protected. And then just as a public service, I thought I would read that. The Fourth Amendment to the United States Constitution, the right of people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures, shall not be violated and no warrants shall be issued but upon probable cause supported by an oath or affirmation, and particularly describing the place to be searched. Further, there's CATS versus United States, which is case law supporting that private citizens have a reasonable expectation of privacy, whether or not there is any physical And then Part Three, Title One, Chapter 214, Section 1B of Massachusetts General Law, further says that a person shall have a right against unreasonable substantial or serious interference with his privacy. The oath that everyone in here takes, that oath of office in the Massachusetts, holds everyone to the Constitution, to the laws of the Massachusetts general law. And will, and further, they will obey lawful orders of superior officers. And I think that's an important distinction. I was, recently, all of these protections that are mine were broken by a member of this body. And I'm not going to back down from holding that person accountable. It's not okay. Furthermore, if we're gonna be making sweeping changes to the charter without public process, maybe you could add in one.
Right, time.
That supports those opioid abatement funds.
Thank you. Individual number two. Did you sign in here? I just can't read. It's in cursive that I can't really, perhaps it starts with an A? Was that, did you sign up for public comment?
No.
Oh, okay. Anyone else? All right. And then I'm not seeing anyone else on Zoom, so.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilor Bartley.
There's a couple of people, three people here in the audience that have orders. Would we be, I didn't talk to the chairs about this, so I don't want to step on toes, but could we possibly take them out of order so we can help them on their way?
Absolutely.
Would that be okay?
I'll second that.
Okay, so motions.
It's a very nice gesture, Councilor Bartley.
Motion to suspend the rules. And do you have the item numbers?
Yeah, I'll look like Sean's here first. So 51, no, I'm sorry, Sean. Yeah, 51 and 52.
52.
So I'll make a motion to take 51 and 52 out of order.
Second.
What about 50?
How about 50, 51, and 52? That sound good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right. So motion to suspend rules, take those out of order, please.
Sounds good. The motions were made and seconded to suspend the rules and take items 50, 51, and 52 out of order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll read them briefly into the record. 50 is an order that the city appropriate $8,691,405 for the purpose of paying costs of a replacement at Kelly School roof. 51 is that the city appropriate the amount of $4,498,497 for the purpose of paying costs of a replacement of the McMahon Elementary School roof. And 52 is that the city appropriate $12,945,697 for the purpose of paying costs of a replacement of the Hoyok High School roof.
And so the motion be to receive, adopt the committee report, and pass the first reading?
Motion has been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report, technically passing the second reading. But, that's all right. I know what you meant. Under discussion, Councilor Jordane.
In the absence of our chair not being here, I'll, I'll pinch into, unless she is here online.
She, I wasn't sure if she was gonna be able to. So I think that would be appreciated.
We seen her earlier, so.
Yeah.
Anyways, I'd like to just, on behalf of the Finance Committee, just say a few things. One, Sean came in and very, made a very nice presentation relative to us replacing a number of the roofs at a number of our schools. And I did wanna just kinda walk through, so the public has an idea of what we're talking about here. The $8.7 million in improvements at Kelly School will be to replace the roof of this particular school. A number of these will also have ADA improvements at the schools. And the good news is that Sean felt very strong that we have a really good shot to get our 80% reimbursement for these funds. And so this bonding that we are allowing under our vote here this evening would authorize the approval of this, because the state has stated that we would be eligible for these funds. So this helps us to advance our, and continue to advance our application for these dollars. So this is to help the school department, to help do these really necessary improvements. In particular, there were three schools that were put in the poor category for roofs. And each of these are being addressed in this capital improvement plan. And we commend the school department for doing that. That's item number 50. Item number 51 speaks to a $4.5 million bond appropriation to take place at the McMahon School on Kane Road. Same points. This roof is in desperate need of repair, and this will have a new roof installed by us approving this. And then lastly, we have item number 52, which is just under $13 million for improvements at Hoyok High School. Now, should be noted that there was some improvements done during the 2011, 2012 renovation, but this will be to do a completely new roof for the entire high school. So that's what is these three items here. I would recommend, it was the unanimous consent of the Finance Committee, all five of us, to support this, these bond approvals. Their hope is that, I should also say, their hope is that things have been running pretty well cost-wise. We've had, like, for example, our experience at the Peck Middle School has been very positive that things are coming under budget. So the hope is that we will not even need all of these funds to do it. And if we approve these funds, the goal is to spend, you know, through a competitive process, less, but we do have this authorized, and we could get the 80% reimbursement even on these higher amounts. So this is work that's critical, needs to be done, and should put these schools in good shape for another 20, 25, 30 years.
Thank you very much. Councilor Givner, did you, I missed your hand earlier. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
I just wanted to add, I thought it was really great to hear about the ADA improvements, and that although Hoyok High didn't, didn't qualify for the reimbursed ADA improvements, Kelly was approved for, for the 80% at 2.2 million, and McMahon was approved for 804,088 improvements. So I think that's really exciting news, because we deserve it, and the kids deserve it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Bartley?
Yeah, just to the chair, to the, to Councilordane. So, do I understand this, Kevin? This is, these are gonna commence in the summer of 2026, or be finished in 2026? Do you, do you have a sense of the timetable? That's one. And two, do we hear from Cindera relative to the city's bond capacity?
I don't think we had a particular note from Cind, if I may, Madam President.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think we had a particular note from Cindera, but these are advanced by the mayor and the treasurer, so I'm assuming that they would not be able to come forward if we didn't have the bond capacity. And they won't be approved if we don't, so legally, they have to be. I don't think that'll be an issue based on the last reports that we received on bond capacity. I think we're good there. And as far as the timetable.
2026, summer.
I'm sorry?
Summer of 2026.
Thank you. Summer of 2026. So, yes, to answer your question, summer of 2026.
Anyone else?
Motion, that it be approved?
All right.
We have a motion on the table.
Okay.
Yep.
On the motion?
On the motion, all those, or the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to approve 50, 51, and 52.
I Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
11 ayes, 0 nays.
Point of order.
With that, you've passed those items. Councilor Sullivan?
Just a question for Sean. Do we need a separate vote on each one of these?
Yeah, so.
Oh, okay. Sure. If you need a separate vote.
Motion to suspend the rules and allow Sean to do his.
But we just voted, so I don't really know how I can, I can't turn back time, as Chair said.
Motion to potentially reconsider our action, I suppose.
Okay. Motion, under discussion, motions are made and seconded to potentially reconsider our action? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sean, do you wanna speak on that?
Yeah, so all it is, is that each agenda item has to have its own vote. So when it gets voted on, and then you, and then it gets the seal by the city clerk, that's all it is. So each item is its own, its own vote, where it's not like packaged together, where it would show like 50, 51, 52 is all one vote. It has to be each school for each.
Okay, that's fine. Makes sense.
All right.
So, potentially has turned into.
Motion to reconsider our.
Second.
Motion to reconsider our actions.
On packaging of 50, 51, and 52.
On the packaging of 50, 51, and 52, and taking them up separately to vote separately. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading on item 50.
Motion has been made and seconded to pass the second reading on item 50. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to approve item 50.
I Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
11 ayes, 0 nays.
With that, you've passed 50.
Motion to pass the second reading on item number 51.
Motion has been made and seconded to pass the second reading on item 51. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to adopt 51.
I Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
11 ayes, 0 nays.
Okay, with that, you passed 51.
Motion to pass the second reading on item number 52.
And motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading on item 52. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to adopt.
I Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
11 ayes, 0 nays.
And Madam President, motion to suspend our rules, take, as we said, take item 53 out of order.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to take item 53 out of order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 53 is the Committee on Development and Government Relations, to whom was referred a petition from Roel Montez of 33 Mountain View Street for Springfield for a street vendor permit. Recommended that the petition be granted with the following conditions, that the hours of operation are 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, that the applicant confirm approval from the Board of Health, and that the applicant confirm that the fee to the Board of Health has been paid. Councilor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. So this gentleman was in the chambers earlier, and I mixed up his order with another, so I apologize for that. But his application, or his street vendor permit was approved through the, in DGR unanimously with the hours that you mentioned. And he did send in his Board of Health certificate, which I think is in some of, one of the other items for, items to be received from, I don't know, it's not here. Those are different ones. But he did have his application complete with his Board of Health permit and the documents that were submitted to DGR, and he presented on the spot. So we had a nice discussion, and he's operated there before, and so he can, he'll be able to continue.
Thank you, Counselor. Would anyone like to add anything? Councilor Bartley?
Yeah, just, just the days, it says the hours of operation are 9:00 to 5:00. Is it every day of the week?
His hours are Monday through Saturday, 9:00 to 5:00.
Okay, so if we could make a motion to add Monday through Saturday to the special, if it's, if it's on the, your line, it's not on my agenda, Monday through Saturday, it just says 9:00 to 5:00.
I'll second that.
All right, so the motion was made and seconded to amend the conditions on the special permit to add the days of operation, Monday through Saturday.
9:00 to 5:00, yep.
9:00 to 5:00. 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
That's the motion.
On the motion to, for the amendment, is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And so, you wanna just make the motion?
Motion to approve the special permit.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the special permit. The clerk will call the roll, maybe, for this? Yeah.
I Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. With that, you've granted the special permit application.
And a motion to take up item 60 out of order?
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules and take item 60 out of order. Hold on. Okay. 60, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 60 is from the Committee on Development and Government Relations, that the city council authorize a sale of property, city-owned property on Cabot Street, a parcel on Cabot Street, to Jose A. Santos Suarez for $1,000. After the property was declared by the city council to be surplus on October 6, 2020, the city sent notices to a butters that the property was available for sale. The city received a response from Mr. Santos Suarez as the only responding abutter. The property is valued under the procurement threshold. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. So Mr. Santos Suarez came in and talked about why he wanted this parcel. It is between a property that he owns and a property of one of his relatives, and he's been, they've been upkeeping the property for years now, and they really would just like to own the property, so they can put in a fence, and beautify, and also keep their, that space between the houses from being like a, a cut-through for, for people walking around in the neighborhood. So it was granted.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Anyone else?
Just need a motion.
So.
Motion to approve item 60?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve item 60 and adopt, or grant the, adopt the sale. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Did I need, do I gotta do a roll call?
I think it needs a roll call vote, yeah.
Sorry. Thanks. The, I take that back, and the clerk will call the roll.
I Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, with that, you have approved the sale for item number 60.
May I make a motion to also take item 58 out of order by request?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I'm just gonna make a note that I'm, I'm going to abstain from this.
Abstaining? Okay. So a motion was made and seconded to suspend the rules and take up item, I'm so sorry, what was it? 50?
58.
58. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So 58 is the Committee on Development and Government Relations, to whom was referred an order that the reverter requirement for the transfer of the property located at 689 Main Street be removed from the conditions related to the transfer of the property from Ja-Jan, Ja-Jan LLC to Richard Kolakowski or his assignee for the development of a self-storage facility. The city council approved the transfer in May 2024. However, a reverter requirement was included. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. So this was actually a pretty complicated discussion. There were, Counselor Anderson Burgos had actually worked quite a bit with this. The eternity, the attorney for this, for Mr. Kolakowski was present, Attorney Fialke, and he explained why they wanted the reverter to be removed, but I was gonna ask Counselor Anderson Burgos to speak on this, because, yeah, he had about 20 pages of notes, so.
Sure. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure about the 20 pages of notes, but a lengthy one at that. And I'll, for the sake of this meeting, I'll try to be short. So generally, the current owner bought the property six or seven years ago with intention to develop on that property. But again, to make this short, there was a lot of red tape, a lot of loopholes that he had to jump through. He keeps spending money on this property, spent over $60,000 to remove the gas tanks that were underground. Had that all excavated, cleaned out, and prepared for the property, or the business he was planning on building. Again, kept running into, you know, block, blockades, so he decided to sell the property, and now the current person who's interested in buying this, who's gonna turn this into a state-of-the-art storage facility, which I feel that is actually appropriate for the location, especially given that it's off the highway, he can't, he cannot get the loan funded, because the, if I remember correctly, the bank that is going to fund the loan does not want a reverter clause. So this reverter clause has been a pain for six to seven years. And at the end of the day, what I wanna see is business coming into Hoyok, not making it more difficult. Um, again, I would not, I mean, I'll put my name behind this. I, I trust and believe that this is going to be beneficial to the city. Again, I'll put my name behind it. Um, and, you know, six to seven years, that's, that's a long time. And we, we need something there. So anyways, if any of you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. Um, and that's it. That's, that's all, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Greeney?
Yeah, just quickly, uh, through the chair to, uh, Counselor Anderson Burgos. I don't know, uh, Ja John LLC, I know there are several properties in Hoyok that are Ja Juon. I don't know if this is a misspelling or if this is the actual spelling of the LLC. I believe it's Ja Juon.
Yeah, um, he also owns the old, remember on, um, our classic, I mean, any Hoyok or no R and R variety, um, that's on Sergeant, the, the corner there on Sergeant? That, he owns the house next to it. He owns the, um, the gas station on South Street. Yes, he, he owns multiple properties. And if you visit his properties, you can tell they're very well maintained. That's why I decided to say, you know, I'll put my name behind this. This, this guy is legit, you know?
I'm not disputing that. I'm just disputing the spelling. I believe it's Ja Juon.
Yeah, you got me there, Counselor Greeney. I, I'm, I'm not good with spelling as well, but I believe it's the same person.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Givner?
I just wanted to add that, um, it was approved unanimously by, um, the DGR Committee to send to council. So I would recommend this order for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve item?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight, uh, under discussion. Counselor Jordane?
Just a quick question. Did Law Department or Procurement or anybody, any of the departments voice any concerns with us approving this? Or the, or the mayor's office or anybody?
So, um,
They were all comfortable?
John Diejack was here, Aaron Vega from Oped, um, and our city lawyer was here. So it was explained that this has actually been, been a hindrance in this case. Generally, um, it's been my understanding through discussions with John Diejack that, um, these reverters are put in place for our protection, um, but in this case, it's caused a lot of harm. So having it removed actually helps this business.
Okay, and that was their position?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll sec. Okay, on the motion, um, to approve item fifty-eight, um, the clerk will call the roll. Um, if you vote yes, you are voting in favor of, uh, fifty-eight. I Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Nine yeas, one abstain. Okay. With that, you have passed, um, item fifty-eight. Thank you very much. And thank you. Okay. You good?
Back to the future.
We're Jenny, Dave abstained. Patty's gone. Jenny?
One.
Was it?
We have three people absent, so it should have been nine, right? Nine, zero?
Yeah.
Dave abstained.
I'm sorry?
Dave abstained.
Wait, there's three people, three people that didn't vote, so, right? Oh, so it should be ten, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thirteen.
For the record, it's still approved, um, but it's
Ten, zero.
Ten, zero, and one abstained. All right. Thank you, everyone. Can't do math half the time at this hour of night. All right, so we're gonna go back to our regularly, unless there was anything else that I was missing to take out of order.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll go back to the beginning of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to take item one off the table.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to take item one off the table. Item one is the June eleventh, twenty twenty-four and September fourth, twenty twenty-four executive session minutes reviewed and ready for partial release as of August fifth, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we release the portion of June eleven minutes other than the section involving cannabis as recommended by the Law Department.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to release the minutes from
June eleventh.
June eleventh, uh, with the exception of the suggested redactions in the section related to cannabis litigation as recommended by the Law Department. Did I get that? Okay. Um, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
And I wasn't clear if, um, I know that for September fourth, we have to keep pages one through four redacted.
Yep, I had that.
But if anything further could be released, then I'd make the motion that we release it.
Uh, so the motion was made and seconded to, uh, release item two, uh, which is the December ninth, twenty twenty-four Finance Committee Executive Session Minutes, um, reviewed and withheld in entirety as of August fifth, twenty twenty-five. And release those minutes with the exception of sections one through four to be redacted? And yes, Counselor?
I'm sorry, I'm still in September.
Oh, I'm so sorry. That makes so much more sense to me right now.
Cause there were two.
Yeah, there were two sets. Two sets. I see what you did. I got it.
Maybe I created a problem.
No, no, no. It's, we're good.
Okay.
Um, so, September fourth with, uh, sections one through four.
Remaining redacted.
Remaining redacted.
And if there is anything else that the Law Department said we could release, that we would release it. I don't have specific notes on that.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, all right, so the motion was made and seconded to release, uh, September fourth, twenty twenty-four, uh, with the exception of one through four to be redacted, sections one through four to be redacted and other, um, sections if the Law Department is okay with it. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that's one.
Yep.
Item one.
And then motion to take up item two off the table?
Motion to, has been made and seconded to take item two off the table. Item two is the December ninth, twenty twenty-four Finance Committee Executive Session Minutes, reviewed and withheld in entirety as of August fifth, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor? Any opposed? Yep, Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so these were reviewed by our Law Department, but they have recommended that we continue to keep these in executive session and not release them at this time.
So.
My motion is to keep them.
On the table. Well, our.
Yes. I'm sorry?
Yes, Counselor Bartley?
Why don't we just return them to the Law Department and, and then let, have them advise us when these are gonna be ready?
Well.
Why do we, why do I have to look at them laid on the table for our next period of time?
That's just what, yes, Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. Um, I like to see them kept on the table so that we keep track of them because what happened is we lost track of them for about a couple of years. So if we have them in front of us periodically, we'll ask for a review. And I think we're getting up to date and getting cleaned up with this, so I'd just like to keep them in front of us. Thank you.
Yep. Um, so on that note, um.
My motion is to leave December nine on the table.
Motion's to le- leave, has been made and seconded to leave item two on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And, hang on one second. I think for April. Yes, motion to take up item three?
Motion's been made and seconded to take up item three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, uh, three is April fifteen, twenty twenty-five Executive Session Minutes, not yet reviewed.
So my motion for item three is that we release items three, five, six, seven, eight, and nine to the public. And items one, two, four, and five remain in executive.
So some of five gets released and then the redacted parts of five stay, or is it?
Um, the first ones that I read get released and items one, two, four, and five remain confidential.
Second.
Okay. Um, so.
And I'll say, I'll add, as recommended by the Law Department.
Yeah.
There are any technical discrepancies.
Right.
We will refer to what she read into.
Okay, perfect.
How's that?
That sounds great. Um, I just wanna make sure I don't miss any either. Um, so, uh, the motion was made and seconded to, uh, release three, uh, six, seven, or six, or three, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and then one, two, four, and five are redacted, um, at the discretion of the Law Department that had been reviewed in executive session.
Remains confidential.
Um, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So that's, hold on one second. All right, so that brings us to item four, the minutes from the September second meeting.
Motion to receive and approve with a brief comment?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, the motion has been made and seconded to receive and approve with a comment. Counselor Jordane?
Yeah, I did wanna just make sure that we're all crystal clear about one of the points made here in the minutes, uh, from the public comment period from, uh, relative to what Mr. Purcell had to say relative to yours truly at the last meeting. The, what, I just wanna be clear so we get it in this minutes, that I never said that I filed the order for public comment. That is true. That was Mr. Vega. What I said is that I helped lead the support for adoption of public comment period while I was president of the council, okay? So this was one of the reforms that we put into place, um, during, and obviously I was serving at that time. I never said I filed the order. So just so we're crystal clear, that seems to be the alleged lie. That was not, I never claimed that. I said that there was ample opportunity that we could have had to defeat that. And I helped to make people also feel comfortable with doing that. And that is how we ended up having a public comment period. So that was a lot of discussion that took place relative to creating public comments. So just so we get the history on that squared away as to what I said and what I didn't say. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you wanna amend it?
No, cause what he said, I, he said what he said, and that's fine. I'm not looking to amend what Mr. Purcell said. I'm only looking to clarify the claim versus what I said and what he said. So that's fine. So we're good.
Sounds good. Um, on the motion to receive and adopt, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Great job.
All right.
Then are we just keeping five on the table?
Yes.
I haven't heard otherwise. Okay.
Yep.
Um, and how about six?
Well, I, I'll make a motion, remove this from table.
Motion has been made and seconded to take item six off the table. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Under discussion? Counselor Bartley? Oh, I'll read it into the.
I figured you wanna read.
Thanks. Um, the Committee on Development Government Relations, to whom was referred a communication from Adam Mulcahy and Christina Gusick, notification of intent to sell under MGL, commanded that the order be referred to full council without recommendation. Counselor Bartley?
Is to give, to give a leave to withdraw.
Motion has been made to give leave to withdraw and seconded?
Under discussion.
Under discussion. Counselor Bartley?
This is now, as we remember from, uh, that debate we had in last month or whenever it was, uh, the, the, the time has now gone by for, for sixty-one A, so there's nothing that we can, we can do about it. So there's no need to leave this on the table anymore.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so on the motion to give leave to withdraw, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And, uh, I guess I'll, I'll make, geez, sorry, I wish I saw this map, Chair.
That's okay.
Take number seven off the table.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded to take item seven off the table. All those in favor? Any opposed? Seven is related. It is, um, from a communication from Castro Land Trust regarding right of first refusal for mountain road parcel under chapter sixty-one A. Uh, recommended that the order be referred to the full council without recommendation. Counselor Bartley?
And my motion is just to, just to receive.
Second.
Motion's to receive communication. Uh, any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Item eight is the Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred an order that schedules B and C, or these are, we have a lot of these things, um, on, are we taking them one at a time? Or what do you guys wanna do? Do you wanna leave them on the table?
Item eight off the table.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take item eight off the table. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
I think we, if I may, Madam President.
Yeah.
I believe last we talked, it came up to, uh, final, uh, to be adopted, uh, to be ordained. I think we were at the last step and then the motion was to reconsider and put it on the table when it didn't pass. So I would request that we take the vote on the final to be ordained. And, uh, just take the vote and the vote will be what the vote is and, uh, we can move forward. So that would be my motion.
So I have Counselor, um, McGrath Smith and Counselor Rivera?
I'll, I'll second that motion, so just.
Okay, so the motion was made and seconded, um, to vote on item eight. Um, and under discussion, I have Counselor McGrath Smith and then Counselor Rivera.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, yes, I think, you know, last time when the vote failed, it was moved for reconsideration and tabled. I think that, uh, where it currently is, um, it's become sort of a distraction. There's some concern that somehow the council wants to support this, uh, you know, completely, um, in every way. And I think every conversation that I've been in around this has been that this is a non-starter and that we could maybe look at, is there anything else we want to consider? Is there a very small amount of a raise that we want to put forward for any of these positions? And I have not heard anyone say that they're interested in seeing an insane raise for the mayor or for council. And yet somehow that's becoming the distraction, where kind of folks are very concerned this is gonna happen. I'm happy to lay it to bed because there's not a single conversation I've had in ordinance or in this body where that was the case. And I don't think the misinformation is helpful or just the confusion, right, in the general public. So yes, um, I'm happy that Jordane, um, put it to the motion. That was gonna be mine. I just wanna see us vote on this and move forward. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor, uh, Rivera?
Um, thank you. I was actually gonna motion to just send it back to committee, but if everyone wants to vote on it, that's on.
Second.
You know what I'm saying? If, if Counselordane and everyone else wants to vote on it, that's cool. But for the sake of half of the things that Counselor McGrath Smith just mentioned around the disinformation and how we're using, how it's being utilized as a, as a tactic in this election season, I think it makes sense just to send it back to committee and hopefully, um, the next committee or ordinance committee chair can take it up and follow it through at the right timing where it makes sense, um, where everyone is incorporated and included and everyone is feeling like it's not being pushed through and just for a particular individual. If that makes sense to anyone else. But if they wanna vote on it, they can move forward on the vote. Again, I never had no stake in the game. I think for me, it was just going through as a procedure, doing my job as the ordinance chair. Um, this was filed a while ago. I was just trying to go through the processes. Um, and for me, it was more about building together and trying to negotiate and have conversations. But as the other counselor mentioned, that never happened. So it made sense to me to send it back to committee. But again, it's the will of the body. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Jordane and then maybe I, was that a hand? Counselor Bacon? No.
I don't know.
Okay, sorry. Um, Counselor Jordane?
Yes, Madam President. I just think, one, it's important that we vote so the public knows where we stand on these, uh, forty percent increase for the council, thirty percent increase for the mayor. And I do note that the mayor recently made an announcement that he's opposed to it. And, uh, I take him at his word that he is opposed to it. Um, by the way, just for, we're all crystal clear. If we also read my statement very carefully, um, and I, I don't know how this could be misinterpreted cause I put it specifically in writing. I never said the mayor asked for a thirty percent. He has this post out there saying that I said, he said that he asked for the council to put forward a thirty percent increase. I don't know why people are saying things when there's a specific statement in writing and it doesn't say anything about the mayor asking for a thirty percent increase. But yet the statement still goes out there. So I wanna make sure since we're being crystal clear as to where everybody stands. And where I stand is that, one, we shouldn't be doing this, which was the point of me taking a stand at the last meeting. And now, this is not the time, the mayor and I, I agree wholeheartedly with the mayor. This is not the time to be doing these increases. Uh, this should be adopted. The public has a right to know where we stand on this issue. Sending it back to committee sort of is like punting the football, uh, for another day. I, I think we should, um, take a stand, vote on this issue, put it to rest, one way or the other. And if it passes, it passes. If it fails, it fails. And then we move forward. Thank you.
So, thank you very much. Um, I am getting some hands up from folks and I want everyone to have the opportunity to participate. I also wanna remind folks that we had over an hour discussion at the last meeting about this item. Um, and we're not gonna do that again this evening. Um, so either it's going back to committee or we're gonna vote on it. And the motion that's on the floor right now is that we vote on it. Um, that being said, I, that is the motion that's on the floor. What, what's up?
Well, with, with no disrespect, but I, there was a motion and I, I think I heard Counselor Anderson Burgos second. Well, with, with no disrespect, but I, there was a motion and I, I think I heard Counsel Anderson Burgos seconded online.
Okay, so then we'll vote on your motion first and then we'll vote on Counsel Jordan's. You can always raise your hand and ask for a port of, point of order. If you have any questions. Yep. Um, so then there is a motion on the floor. Thank you. My apologies. Um, and, uh, we'll do, I'm going to let Counsel, I had Counsel Rivera next and then Counsel, um, Vacan. I saw your hand up. Um, and I don't see anyone else online. So Counsel Rivera.
And, uh, so, um, so yeah, again, it's, it's not, it's not, it's not a game. It, ultimately, it's, there's been work that's been done. Um, and trying to push the work or diminish the work that our HR professionals have done throughout the process here. Um, it makes no sense to kind of like get rid of it altogether and not actually work together collaboratively to try to get this done in the future. Doesn't have to be done next year or in two years. It can be done whenever the council feels like it can be done. But there's already a system in place, um, and kind of like trying, trying to push it through politically doesn't make sense. But I guess for some people it does. Um, again, it is what it is. Thank you.
Counsel Vacan?
Thank you. I would just note that this order did not pass at the last meeting. And if we had just accepted the vote, we wouldn't be talking about it again. Thank you.
Thanks for that. One, you're on, um, you're not on mute. So that's not helpful. So thanks. Um, so this, we're going to vote and it is what it is. And we didn't vote last time and it is what it is. And we're all just doing the best we can with the cards we're dealt, aren't we?
Indeed.
So, um, with that, I need, first I need, um, uh, most, this was a motion to refer the, uh, item eight back to committee.
Yeah, do you want us to roll call votes on this, Madam Chair?
Absolutely. You took the words right out of my mouth, sir. Um, no gray area here. Um, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting, um, for number eight to send it back to committee. Aye, Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Vacan?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
No.
Jordan?
No.
McGrath Smith?
No.
Murphy Rombaletti?
No.
Ocasio?
No.
Karen, pull, pull your mic down. So I, I couldn't even hear your vote. Thank you. Thanks, Karen.
Okay, I forgot, what are we going in on? On number eight?
We're on eight.
To send it back to committee. Yes or no?
To send it back to committee.
No.
Thank you, Karen.
Three a's, eight n's.
Okay, so that motion didn't pass.
On, on the main motion?
Yep. That the ma, that the passage be ordained.
The motion is that the passage be ordained, um, and the, oh, all those in favor? Oh, wait, no, because we already did-
On adoption of the ordinance.
My apologies. Um, motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to adopt the changes in item eight. If you vote no, you're voting against adopting the changes. Aye, Rivera?
No.
Sullivan?
No.
Vacan?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
No.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
No.
Jordan?
No.
McGrath Smith?
No.
Murphy Rombaletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
No.
Two yays, nine nays. Great. With that, it does not pass.
Alright.
Thank you, everyone. I believe that item nine was what got voted and then, uh, reconsidered. So what would you guys like to do with item nine on the table?
What was that? Can you re-
Uh, so, sorry. Item nine is the Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred an order that the residency requirement for the CPO and purchasing director position be removed, recommended that the order through a waiver option be adopted.
I'll make a motion remove from table.
Motion's been made and seconded to remove it from the table. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll, I'll make a motion to pet, that the, uh, did we go through the readings, Madam Chair? I don't remember last time.
We did go through the readings.
I'll make a motion that be ordained.
Okay. Um, motion that the passage be ordained. Is there further discussion on nine? Okay.
Um, I, I, just, I could give a breakdown of what this is about.
Yeah, if, yeah, sure. I mean, yeah.
This is pretty much, uh, change, we're, we're, um, looking to grant a waiver to a particular, um, individual and one of our, that is our purchasing director, um, who doesn't necessarily live within the community. And we're trying, they were in the conversation, trying to remove the residency requirement. We came to the conclusion where the, we don't want to lose the employee because they're a great employee. So we would like to, uh, adopt a waiver option for this particular individual. Um, but not make it like set in stone forever. Um, so this, this particular, um, situation is just pretty much granting a waiver for, um, this individual to remain in the position and serve while not living in the community.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Okay, on the motion that the passage be ordained, if you vote yes, on nine, you're voting to adopt the order with the waiver option. Aye, Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rombaletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. Thank you.
Madam Chair, there's a point of order, if I may?
Yes, Counsel brightly.
The next series of orders are, because we ran out of time. So this is ten through, looks like twenty-three. Um, are, are, what's, what's the will of the committee? Does the committee want to take these off the table now or not?
That's what I was going to ask. Um-
I think the will of the, I think ordinance is still doing its thing.
I'm gonna, uh, Counsel McGrath Smith has your hand up.
I apologize.
It's okay. Um, Counsel McGrath Smith, as the chair, do you want to?
Yes, thank you, Madam-
Address that.
Um, I just wanted to state that, um, at the last meeting, we decided to table these, waiting for everything coming out of ordinance. We still have a few things coming out of ordinance. I think it makes sense to leave them on the table at this time.
Okay.
Okay, then, uh-
Counsel Jordan, did you want to add anything? Sorry.
I said I agree with Counsel McGrath Smith.
Okay. Sounds good.
What do you want to do, twenty-four?
Love it. Um-
Twenty-four?
I think twenty-four or twenty-five.
Yeah, like, yeah, twenty-four is up there or something?
What is twenty?
So one to-
Wow, that's a drive in my-
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four, I'd like to, uh-
Do separately?
Take up out of order, item number seventy-seven with it.
Second.
Oh, do we want to, oh, wait, so we're just skipping over anyway, right? I don't have to do anything for- Sorry, my apologies. So twenty-four, the motion was made and seconded to suspend the rules and take up item twenty-four, um, out of order. Or not out of order, but-
Seventy-seven.
Do we have seventy-seven?
Twenty-four and seventy-seven.
Right, wait, paper for seventy-seven?
Right. Okay, what's seven is, is that the same as?
Seventy-seven, seventy-seven.
Through- Okay, so I have twenty-four and seventy-seven. The motion was made and seconded to suspend the rules and take them out as a package, um, to discuss together. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, um, twenty-four is, uh, filed by Counsel Sullivan. It's House Bill number three, seven, five, four. And then, um, seventy-seven is an order filed by Counsel Sullivan, uh, order that the Hoyoke City Council adopt a resolution in support of House Bill three, seven, five, four, an act relative to traffic regulation using road safety cameras. This bill is specifically crafted to target red light violations only. Um, Counsel Sullivan?
Yeah, so I, I'd, I'd like to, uh, ask the council to take final action tonight and pass the resolution without sending it to committee. The reason for this is, um, once, this is just in support of this, um, red light bill. It's a, uh, it's before the House now for the third time. There's a very short period of time left, uh, before they're done for the year to show some more support. Every time it's gone through the House, it has had more support from more communities. But this would, and the reason for, uh, it will come back. If this is ever approved by the House and the Senate, it would come back to us again because it's, the provision is, uh, that it has to be adopted by the individual cities to adopt the state law. So we'd have a chance to discuss it then. This is for, uh, red light monitoring. Uh, I've seen this before in other cities. Uh, it's not legal in the Commonwealth of Mass, but I've seen it in other states. Everybody knows what's been going on with the red lights. We just had a very bad accident down here at the bottom of Lyman Street, uh, where a, uh, somebody running a red light actually hit a, a school transport vehicle. So I, I think everybody's seen it all over town. And, um, it's a real good matter of public safety. We'll have a chance to discuss it if it ever does get through the House.
Thank you, Counsel Sullivan. I have Counsel McGrath Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, and through the President to Counsel Sullivan. In general, um, I, I completely agree this is a good place to go. Um, but I do have some concerns about taking final action only because the order itself, um, in seventy-seven, um, says it's crafted to target red light violations only. Um, but I went into the, the master general law that it says in the wording of the resolution. Um, and everything, if you look at, um, the second to last paragraph on the second page, um, up to where it mentions, uh, like three and then four, yes. Everything before that is all about what it says in your, in your order, Counsel Sullivan, that it's red light violations. The three exceeding the speed limit and violation of section seventeen and seventeen D. Seventeen D is like construction zones, um, eighteen B, and then blocking an intersection. So those ones just aren't about red light violations. They're about speeding. So either we need to modify the text of the order or we have to remove that part because it really does go beyond the red light violations to speeding enforcement in general, specifically construction zones.
I don't have that in front of me right now. Um-
Like, I'm happy for us to move this forward with our support as it's written. I don't need it to have that line that says, you know, this bill is specifically crafted to target red light violations only. I, we could rem, we could just amend. Right. So would you want to amend it just to remove that, that line?
Yeah, I'd be fine with that.
In your order? And then we are just saying that we're in support of it as a whole?
Correct.
I'm happy to do that if, if someone wants to make a motion to that effect, if they make of the order.
You make the motion. I'll second.
Uh, I, sure. I have, um, I do have Counsel Vacan in the queue. Did you want to respond to that before the amendment or?
Sure. Um, I interpreted that last sentence as only explanatory, not as part of the resolution. But to make it clear, I'll make a motion that we delete the last sentence of the order.
Thank you.
And simply let it read, adopt a resolution in support of House Bill three, seven, five, four.
Second.
Okay, so motion has been made and seconded to amend the, um, order to, uh, clarify, to remove the last sentence from the order and just clarify that, um, it's, uh, a resolution in support of House Bill three, seven, five, four, an act relative to traffic regulation using road safety cameras. Any other discussion, Counsel Jordan?
I just wanted to ask one thing is, is it going to be a vote of the city council and the mayor as like, what is the local option approval of this? Like, you know, down the road. So I'm in support of what you're trying to do. Um, I guess I just want to be crystal clear that when we say normally local options require, mass general law, chapter four, section four says, the legislative body of the city. Is it, is that the deal that it's going to be us? Or is this the DPW director or the mayor only or some other municipal designee? I just want to make sure it's going to, because we would want to have, when it, if, say, this does pass and we have a process, we would be able to have a hearing where residents could come and say, yes, we want to do it, no, we don't want to do. I just want to make sure there's a process for the public.
Yes, there, there is. It's, it's buried that. House bill is actually sixteen pages long.
Okay. But it is, it would ultimately require a vote of the city council at some later date if this passes.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Counsel Graney?
Yeah, this is just a resolution. That's all it is, to support the bill. So obviously there's going to be discussion later, I would think.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, on the motion to, um, adopt the resolution. Um, all those, or wait, we'll do a roll call vote.
You, you don't, just a voice vote. You don't need a-
Well, okay, just a resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Could we send a copy of it to the, uh, state rep and, uh, the state senator?
Sure. A state cop, a copy to the state rep and, or state delegation.
Beautiful.
Okay.
Very nice.
Beautiful. We're moving.
We're moving.
Um, so now we're at twenty-five communications. Um, twenty-five is, uh, from our city solicitor, a settlement agreement between the city of Hoyoke and UPS EU, Hoyoke Public Works. Send to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, twenty-six is from our city solicitor, settlement between Hoyoke and Nage.
Finance.
Uh, send to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty-seven is from the city auditor, uh, the mayor's fiscal year twenty-twenty-six supplemental budget communication and budget book.
Finance?
Finance.
Do we lay this on the table?
Finance.
Okay. Um, I wasn't sure if it was similar to when we like lay the mayor's budget on the table. You know what I mean?
Well, I second her motion, put in finance.
Okay. Um, there's a motion, it's seconded under discussion. Counsel Jordan?
Yes, Madam President, your suggestion may be a good one because, um, in fairness, um, this, unless we want to handle it in finance, however-
I really don't care.
Right, okay. Because I'm just saying is, there's a lot of these different edits that are being stated here for us to change. So this is a supplemental budget coming in that the council would have to vote on. But if we could handle it all in finance, you know, or as a committee of the whole, but it'd probably be easier for the body, probably than we did it in finance.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, cool.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
All those in favor to finance? Any opposed? Okay, um, twenty-eight is from Laura Wilson, the chair of the Parking Advisory Board.
To ordinance.
Send to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty-nine is-
Motion to take items twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two as a package and receive?
Okay. Motion has been made and I thought I heard a second, but now I'm not sure.
Second.
Second. Um, to suspend the rules and take twenty-nine through thirty-two, receive and send to DGR or just receive? Sorry.
Just receive.
Um, twenty-nine through thirty-two, um, to receive. Let me just read them into the record. Twenty-nine's from Yoni, uh, our conservation director in the Conservation Commission letter regarding chapter sixty-one A for nine fifty-seven homestead. Thirty is from Devon Passick, a letter to DGR for two oh three West Franklin special permit. Thirty-one is a border health permit for one Meadow Street Home Bakery and business certificate for one Meadow Street Home Bakery. And thirty-two is the summary of the certified project and special tax assessment application for AM lithography. Uh, receive. Any other discussion? Counsel Givner?
Madam Chair, these are just, um, items that were sent in after a DGR meeting that, um, are items that are on the floor tonight.
They seemed familiar.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item thirty-three, um, is the health benefit meeting minutes from July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Motion to receive. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thirty-four is, uh, from the auditor, the fiscal year twenty-six, general fund and sewer enterprise year-to-date expense versus budget reports.
Receive.
Motion to receive. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thirty-five, uh, we're on to petitions now. Thirty-five is a petition to accept Old Bassett Road as a public way.
For the Board of Public Works, I think.
An ordinance?
That Board of Public Works, they gotta come back with their opinion.
Public safety doesn't, don't, doesn't public safety with the, with the DPW usually do those?
Let me pull up the rules.
Uh. The rules say public safety.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Hold on.
Oh, Counsel McGraw Smith begs to differ.
This is why I want to work on reorganizing that section.
Good thing you're the Chair of Charter and Rules, huh?
And it's in there and we're gonna do it. I have a draft. But I just want to name that i- if you're laying out a road or considering the acceptance of a road, it goes to ordinance. Whereas if it's the safety or paving of a road, it's supposed to go to public safety.
Oh.
Acceptance or discontinuance of a road. Is that in, let, let, let's get our rulebook.
What paid, what?
Let me find roads.
Thank you.
Of course, we can send anything to any committee we want, but.
That's true. Yeah, you're right, two thousand, two thousand twenty-three.
Doesn't the Board of Public Works have to do a hearing first?
They do.
Board of Public Works.
So Board of Public Works first, is that what I'm hearing from Counsel Bartley?
I said that an hour ago.
Yeah, well, I don't know if it was an hour, but, okay.
Eh.
Um, and then, then they would send it to public safety? Or back here and then we'd send it?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
But send it somewhere.
I'm not entirely sure what just got a motion made and I have, I have a lot of hands up, so I just.
The motions refer it to Board of Public Works, um, for now.
Okay, so the motion was made and seconded to Public Works under discussion. I have Counsel Jordan and then Counsel Vacan.
Again, with all due respect to my, uh.
It is here.
colleague, um, I think public safety, the last sentence reads, "And the adoption or abandonment of any public way or the change of any name of any public or private way." So, but again, you know, we can do this however we want. I don't object if it's, really want to go to ordinance book.
Okay. And then Counsel Vacan?
I'll only see, I guess it depends how long you want it to take. Because when my order went to public safety and then over to the Board of Public Works and then over to ordinance, it took a year. So, just saying. I think the Board of Public Works, if they do their hearing, is the good place to start.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Fair enough.
All right, we'll get clarity on that rule later anyway. All right, all those in favor to send to Public Works?
Aye.
Aye. One hour later, right?
All good.
All good.
Okay, that was thirty-five. Thirty-six.
I don't want you to say the name of his street.
Oh.
That's a horrible name.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think that's very nice at all.
Make an editorial.
Oh, there's a late file that goes with thirty-six and.
Motion to take up thirty-six and late file whatever it is that pertains to it.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five.
And, uh, normally.
Ten A.
Oh. Oh, wow.
Oh, ten A.
So, um, yeah, normally I might not have accepted a late file because it was already late. But, um, this zone change.
Good news.
Yes, so, um, item, let me read them into the record. Thirty-six, uh, the motion was made and seconded to suspend the rules and take thirty-six and late file eighty-five as a package out of order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So thirty-six is a petition, um, for a zone change at one twenty Front Street. But eighty-five is a communication, um, from, uh, the applicant requesting the withdrawal of the zone change application for one twenty Front Street. Um, so.
Well, I'll make a motion to, uh, to deny the, uh, zone change at thirty-six and, uh, then we can make a motion to receive his, uh, letter at eighty-five.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yep. So the motion was made and seconded to deny thirty-six, the zone change request, and then, um, accept the communication, uh, within eighty-five.
Okay.
Under discussion, Counsel Jordan.
Right, um, I just want to be careful. He's, why aren't we giving it leave to withdraw as opposed to a denial? Um, there is a significance between the two because my understanding is if we deny someone their zone change, I believe they're barred for X period of year. I think it's two years. Um, unless, I think they can get a waiver from the planning board if they recommended approval. But I don't know if this has ever gone to planning, but I think he would be precluded from applying again if we denied. I don't know if that's the will of the body. I don't really, I think this is coming in for the first time, so.
And I, my understanding, thank you, Counsel Jordan, my understanding is that the, um, Devin in the Building Department told him he didn't need it.
I see.
So I don't know if that makes a difference.
If he doesn't, then why would we want to den, I mean, I'm ju- just playing devil's advocate. Why would he want to deny it versus the guy's withdrawing his application? I don't know anything about that.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, on just process, why wouldn't we want to give leave to withdraw? And then just allow, he doesn't need it, he's withdrawing his application versus a denial.
Counsel Bartley?
Yeah.
Well, first of all, I, I made the motion and seconded, but that, that's okay. But the reason why I wanted to deny it is because of significance of that zone and that partic- in a particular relationship to those wonderful apartments that we just developed over there that, that came with, uh, a lot of controversy, uh, ten, twelve years ago when certain members of this body wanted to wipe out that whole, that whole development. Thank God we didn't. So, th- so the significance of, of the denial on this is that, uh, the IG zone allows certain activities to happen within that zone, namely marijuana stuff, and it's so proximate to the beautiful development at Lyman Terrace that I'd, I'd rather not have in close proximity to, uh, to Lyman Terrace. That's why I wanted to deny it. And I didn't think it would, we'd have to have a debate on it. He wants to remove it. Uh, he doesn't want to ha- change the zone, so just, just deny it.
Okay. Counsel Jordan?
He's looking, that's the application is to put in cannabis?
What? Did anybody say that? Did anybody say that?
Oh, wait, oh, we don't have to.
Nobody said that. Nobody said that. But that's what, what, what happened in the zone. Nobody said he was, that's, that's his petition. So he changes it, which is bizarre. No, the zone, but the IG zone is for cannabis.
Okay.
Now, why he didn't, why he said I.
It's all right.
Close to cannabis is comple- is completely incorrect.
Okay.
Let me listen.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, on the question, please.
All right. Uh, I think, well, on the question.
What is the question?
I don't really know.
I, I, I.
Um, I think, all right, so we're gonna vote on.
The motion to deny.
The motion to deny? That's what's before us unless I hear otherwise, is, would, did?
I'm gonna make a motion to give a leave to withdraw.
So we'll do the motion.
And, and if I may just say.
Sure.
An applicant, this is like standard stuff. An applicant on the same night, apparently this is the first time coming in on the agenda, this person has, who I know nothing about, he has now said, I'd like to retract my application. So somehow in the last couple of weeks, he changed his mind.
Mm-hmm.
His, his right. We don't just stick it to the guy. W- you, you allow the guy to d- to, to pull back his application. Why, what, what are we doing? You know, why would we deny it to the guy? So I'm, I'm gonna say motion to, I don't feel comfortable doing that to this person. I would say leave to withdraw and allow it, so.
Sure, and I also like, yeah, um, Counsel Vacan?
Thank you. I just want to add that the letter from the Building Department said that for what the applicant wants to do, he does not need a zone change. That's what the letter that we have in our packet says.
Yep, so we're just gonna vote.
No, it's.
Some motion to approve? On the motion to withdraw, uh, I am not even gonna try and guess, so I'm gonna do a roll call vote on that.
Oh, Madam Chair?
Counsel Bartley?
I'm, I'm gonna support the leave to withdraw.
Okay.
Just so we're clear.
Yeah.
But my motion was not to stick it to anybody, so I take umbrage with the, the way that's portrayed. I explained my rationale. That's not sticking it. And I do know this applicant. He's been before us many, many times in front of DGR. He's a, he's a gentleman and he's a, he's a sincere businessman. So, I mean, the characterization is, is off the wall. Thank you.
Thank you. So on the motion to, um, give leave to withdraw, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam.
All right.
I'm sorry, Madam President.
Yes.
On that item, isn't the order just to request to withdraw the zone change? So wouldn't we be just voting yes to withdraw the zone change application? If we give it a leave to withdraw, are we just throwing out this order?
Yeah, so the thirty-six, we're giving leave to withdraw because he doesn't need a zone change.
Okay.
And then thirty, uh, or eighty-five, we are receiving.
Okay, understood. My apologies.
No, that's okay. It's a little confusing. I'm doing gymnastics with my brain right now, so it's fine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, Madam Chair, can we take thirty-seven, thirty-eight together? I believe they both go to DGR.
That would be delightful. Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules and take thirty-seven and thirty-eight, uh, as a package and refer to DGR. Let me just read them. Uh, thirty-seven's a petition, um, from Randall Ba- Bassett of eighteen ten North Hampton Street for a secondhand license. And thirty-eight is a petition from Francisco, I'm assuming Gabriel Grab, Grabiel Velez Vega of two fourteen Elm Street for a street vendor license, refer to DGR. Is that right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, under discuss, uh, Counsel Jordan?
Don't.
Sorry.
Secondhand licenses go to finance?
No.
I think, yeah, I think our long, I think our long rule is finance, but unle- unless DGR is doing these now, but I believe those.
I did one once when I was the Chair, but like I just did what got referred to committee, so.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know.
I think.
It's not, it's not always consistent, so it's whatever the will of the body is. If you'd like for it to go to finance, that is fine.
I believe it says that in the rules, but I, you know.
That's, okay.
Well, like I said, we can always send it somewhere else, but.
Oh, I'm just, I'll follow the rules. Um, I just said DGR because I have done it before, so I apologize. Um.
So motion to send to finance?
So thirty-seven is to send to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thirty-eight would go to DGR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
President's report.
President's report. I don't have a lot to report. Um, we had, over the last couple of weeks, it's been very busy, um, after a nice calm August. Um, but, uh, we did have a delegation of folks visiting from our sister city in Trilly, Ireland last week. Um, quick trip, um, but we did get the chance to show them around Holyoke, um, and just, you know, build on some of the relationships we made, um, earlier in the year, so that was really nice. Um, and then, uh, we did have the Senior Fest. Always a wild time. Loved it. Love handing out prizes. So thank you to Parks and Rec and the Senior Center. I know how much work goes into that event. Um, and then, uh, we have a, there is a delegation going to our sister city of Salinas in Puerto Rico. Um, so good luck to them. Uh, Holyoke and Salinas are competing in volleyball. So thankfully I was not asked to be on the team, um, so hopefully they'll be in good hands. And I think that's it. Does anyone have anything else they would like to add? I have Counsel Bartley and then Counsel McGraw Smith.
We, we had the thirteenth Holyoke Day.
Oh, my gosh, that was yesterday.
Yesterday.
Thank you.
Since yours truly started, I take a lot of pride in that, so it, it worked out very well. Thanks for everybody who participated.
It was a great day, good weather.
Yep.
Thank you. Counsel McGraw Smith and then Counsel Vacan and then Counsel Jordan.
Um, I just wanted to name, and thank you, um, that the response to the storm that happened, um, just, I think requires a whole lot of gratitude to the folks who responded very quickly and professionally. So a big thank you to Holyoke Police Department, Fire Department, HGNE, the emergency management team, and so many other people across the city, all the DPW workers. There were so many folks that worked tirelessly for several days to respond to that. And people across the board were really impressed at how fast and professional people were in responding. So a lot of gratitude.
Thank you. Counsel Vacan and then Counsel Jordan.
Oh, and I just want to say we were recognized on the evening weather because with that gorgeous sunset, I got a good snap.
Oh, okay.
Absolute Holyoke.
Nice.
We were recognized.
Love it.
At eleven P.
Way to represent. Eleven PM, perfect.
The gorgeous sunset.
Love it. Uh, Counsel Jordan?
Yes, I just want to make sure Counsel Bartley knows I did not mean to infer he was trying to stick it to anybody, so on that last.
Jordan is the best in the business.
So I just.
We're all gonna do chest falls next.
I just want him to know that, that's all.
Yep.
Kum bah ya, kum bah ya.
Yep, that's right. Counsel Sullivan?
We can, we can disagree and be, be, we're great pals.
All good.
That's right.
My friend.
Yeah, just another note on the storm, uh, former Counselor, uh, Leahy was one of the hardest hit houses in town. He lost, uh, uh, his car got smashed in the driveway. Two trees came down and two landed on the roof of his house also.
Crazy.
Wow.
I leave town for one weekend. Counsel Greeney?
Spoke with Counsel Leahy, uh, yesterday and he said everything was squared away. They really cleaned it up. Yes.
Yes, um, so thank you, everyone. And I felt like I should give you all a reminder and those tuning in. If you are used to your Holyoke gas and electric payments, they're switching over the, um, platform and you gotta switch over, especially if you're all set up on auto payment, you gotta do, change that. So just gotta get that ten percent discount. I figured I should remind you all the way I need the reminder. So, yeah, consider that your reminder. All right.
Very good.
Counsel Vacan?
Thank you. Um, I would just like to request a moment of silence, um, in light of the assassination of Charlie Kirk, please.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam, Madam President?
Counsel Anderson Burgos?
Yes, I'd like to request a moment of silence for, um, Trey Reed. He was a student that was found hanging from a tree, um, in Mississippi, Delta State University, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thirty-nine, reports of committees. Um, thirty-nine is the Committee on Ordinance to whom is referred an order that the Personnel Department and Law Department work in conjunction to update the following ordinances to reflect a modern human resources department. And it is recommended that the order be adopted. Counsel Rivera?
Yes, um, this was requested by the Director of HR, well, now HR before was Director of Personnel. Um, uh, this is more or less just changing a lot of the terminology and updating the terminology from Personnel to Human Resources Department. Um, according to her, uh, she's gone to various different conferences and trainings and she's found that we're probably one of the only municipalities that still uses personnel, um, within, as a job, like, title. So, um, this is just, uh, coming and updating it and bringing it more in tune with, uh, today's language, um, in a sense. Um, but yeah, we, the committee voted to adopt it, I believe, five zero. Um, but, um, if any, any other comments, anything else that wants to be added, uh, feel free to do so.
Counsel Vacan?
Thank you. Just briefly, there is no text changes to this. It's simply the naming as it's been put forth to us. Thank you.
Correct. Okay, anyone else? Is there a motion to pass the first?
Yeah, motion to pass the first.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Second.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to adopt thirty-nine.
I, Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Divine? Oh, sorry. Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGraw Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rombaletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Um, I know that we have, Counsel Divine is not able to join, but I do believe you, she checked in with, uh, the Vice Chair, um, to give updates, but we'll just, we'll tag team it together. um to give updates, but we'll just, we'll tag-team it together without our Chair. Um so forty is the Committee on Finance, to whom is referred an order that in accordance with MGL, that the city uh hereby accept the provisions for the fiscal year twenty-three, safe streets and roads for all, one hundred ninety-seven thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. Local funds, twenty-four thousand five hundred seventy. In-kind match, fifteen thousand. Um recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. So um Aaron Vega came in to speak on behalf of the Engineering Department and mentioned that um this grant would help to look at, uh he's, he originally said all city intersections to decide how to use the planning grant to address problem and, problem intersections. So um there is data from Mast dot, and so the data that shows some of the most problematic intersections are what will be looked at. Um and that there's, the matching funds are in-kind through staff time, so um it's from a smart growth. So the matching gra- grant is from Smart Growth, and this is how the Lyman Terrace Project was put together originally, apparently. Um and the last time we used this was for the Mass Trails Grant. Um and there were some questions about whether it would be all or most dangerous, but according to Mira Gates, who, there's citywide crash data that will be used along with community engagement to decide what intersections have the most needs. So they'll be using um a combination of data and community uh input. Um there was some questions asking if the Beach Street Rotary funding could be used for other projects like this, where it was confirmed that that funding is specifically for that project and um would not be used or moved to anything else. So this was unanimously approved by the Finance Committee to send to City Council.
Okay. Um are there other comments that, uh Counselor Bartley?
I just have one question. It's the, the local funds of twenty-four thousand five seventy, have they been identified?
Those are in-kind funds, and they will come through staff time.
Okay, 'cause the, I appreciate that. The grant says an in-kind match of fifteen thousand, then it says local funds of twenty-four thousand five seventy.
Oh, my apologies. That's from, I guess there's a Smart Growth um grant that still has a balance, and so the funds, any, any cash funds would come from that, was my understanding. He said that they were last used for the Mass Trails Grant, like that grant funding, so apparently there's a pocket of cash. But I could be wrong, but that was my understanding from what um Aaron Vega shared.
Thank you. Counselor Bartley, are you? That was how I, I thought it was from, I thought the cash was from the Smart Growth Grant, but-
Correct.
Counselor Sullivan, is that right? Yeah. Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm good with it. As long as the funds have been identified, that's, that's all I really need to understand.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Uh anyone else? Counselor Jordan?
I just wanted to point out, this is a federal grant. Federal grant. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Good. So uh I would entertain a motion. I need a motion.
Oh, a motion to approve.
Second.
Uh or receive the grants and approve?
Uh we gotta do a motion to adopt the committee report and pass the second reading.
Oh, sorry. I never did finance.
Alright. Um all those, uh the clerk will call the roll. Uh if you vote yes, you are voting to um adopt uh item forty, forty.
How much was the total again? My bad.
One nine seven eight.
One ninety-seven, eight hundred fifty.
Yes. Oh, no, they haven't called me yet. I'm first, but I'll wait for you. I mean, I mean, 'cause I'm first, I'm always like ready now. I'm not usually first.
Crazy how that happens.
I, Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGraw Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, with that, you've passed forty. Um forty-one was the Committee on Finance, to whom is referred an order that there be a transfer of fifty-five thousand dollars as follows. Senior Project Manager to Development Specialist, recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. Um it seems here that the goal is to move that line item from Senior Project Manager to Development Specialist in an effort to hire someone in that um that lower-tier position or lower-grade position, so that they can um train and work up to the Senior Project Management position. Um that was my understanding of that, and um the Finance Committee agreed and sent it for full approval.
Okay. Anyone else? Anything to add? So I would entertain a motion-
To adopt the committee report and pass the first reading?
Second reading?
Second.
Sorry, second reading?
Um motions have been made and seconded to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to uh approve, adopt forty-one, item forty-one.
I, Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGraw Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, with that, you've passed it. Um forty-two is uh the Committee on Finance, to whom is referred a transfer request of nine thousand dollars, three hundred forty, forty-two dollars and eleven cents um from Chief Inspector of Wires to Inspections Electric, recommended that the order be adopted.
Thank you, Madam President. Um so the Chief Inspector of Wires has been out on disability since May, and the disability benefits are, are paid through the union, so it, those benefits do not, are not withdrawn from his pay, or not drawn from his pay, sorry. So um the funding from this salary item needs to be transferred to pay the backup inspector. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great.
Anyone else? Okay.
So I recommend we uh adopt the committee report and pass the second reading?
Second.
Movements have been made and seconded to adopt the committee report and pass the second reading. Um the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting in favor of item forty-two.
I, Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGraw Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With that, you have passed uh forty-two. So forty-three is um the Committee on Finance. Uh a, it was referred in order that the amount of three thousand two hundred fifty dollars be authorized from uh the Building Department's Electrical Inspections um for services rendered in appropriation in fiscal year twenty-twenty-six for services rendered in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, which were unencumbered at the end of the twenty-twenty-five fiscal year. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. Um so apparently our longtime backup inspector submitted a bill after the closing of the twenty-twenty-five um fiscal year, so now it has to be paid from the twenty-twenty-six budget. And unfortunately, the deadline was missed by about an hour um to address this shortfall. So he's been, um he's actually been replaced due to personal health reasons, but this is no longer, the billing is no longer an issue, and weekly bills are now invoiced. So um this will not be a problem in the future, and unfortunately, he's not doing well.
Thank you. Um anyone else?
So motion to receive the, approve the committee report and pass the second reading?
Second.
Movements have been made and seconded to uh receive the committee report and pass the second reading. Um all those in favor? Or no, the, I'm sorry, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting um to approve uh item forty-three.
I, Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGraw Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, with that, you have passed forty-three. Um forty-four is uh that the City Council accept the provisions of the Massachusetts Safe and Successful Youth Initiative. Uh seven hundred nine dollars, or seven hundred nine thousand and seven hundred dollars. Um no-match grant, um and recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. Um so this is a no-match grant that is administered over three years at a hundred thousand a year, and the services are granted through Roka for career um through Roka and Mass Hire. Um there's a couple other organizations, but um Sergeant Zerheid and Chief Keenan came in and explained how this is an ongoing initiative, and um yeah, it's always nice to approve no-match grants.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Bartley?
Well, I mean, this is a incredibly significant grant with possibly some wonderful benefits for the city of Holyoke. So, I mean, without going on to the details, this is for, I mean, this is for anti-gang kind of intervention, and there's a tremendous amount of detail that goes into this. So this is something for which the Police Department and others who support it should be very, very proud. And the, the police persons I've met at Roka seem to be wonderful. I don't know too many, but I certainly met two of the gentlemen. Raj comes right to mind, but uh they, they just seem like they're really on point, and they work with the young people, and maybe it's gonna turn some lives around. So this is pretty darn exciting.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Rivera?
Yeah, now just to add to Counselor Bartley's point, uh shout out to SSYI. That's actually the first job that I had coming out of prison, working with guys that were coming out of prison, and being like a role model with them. Um after job, Mike gave me a job. First, wait, let me correct that. Mike gave me a job, and then I worked with them six months later. But uh the, the, the grant allowed for the opportunity for someone like me to be able to build my rep- rapport up until you get to a point where you can get hired into society. So the, thank you for expanding on that, Counselor Bartley, and thank you, Counselor Givner, for putting it out there.
Thank you. Alright, so uh Counselor Givner, I would entertain a motion.
Uh motion to receive the committee report and pass the fir- uh second reading.
Movements have been made and seconded to receive the committee report uh and pass the second reading. Um the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to accept the grant in item forty-four.
I, Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yep.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGraw Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, with that, you have passed forty-four. Uh forty-five is the Committee on Finance uh that the City Council accept the provisions of the fiscal year twenty-three Cops Office Anti-Heroine Task Force Program, ten thousand dollar no-match grant. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Givner?
Um thank you, Madam President. So it was explained by um Chief Keenan, I believe, explained that it was basically used on over, overtime pay for opioid-related work in the city.
Anyone else? Okay. Um so I would entertain a motion.
Oh, sorry. Motion to receive the committee report and pass the second reading.
Movements have been made and seconded, I think.
Second.
To uh receive and pass the second reading. Um receive the committee report and pass the second reading. Uh the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of item forty-five.
I, Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGraw Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With that, you've passed forty-five. Forty-six is uh the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order for a transfer request of two hundred fifty thousand dollars um from dispatch sergeants, patrolmen, captains to HPD overtime. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. Um this was a little over my head, but um it's my understanding that there's still a hundred seventy-six thousand dollars on hand there, and that two hundred and fifty total should last through the winter of all overtime. There's also mentioned that uh sixty-two thousand of that that the Police Department is actually sixty-two thousand dollars ahead of where they were um the same time last year. So once again, he's, um Chief Keenan was making the point that he's actually saving money and managing the money in the department better, um but I'm not sure. Maybe someone else can add a bit more to that.
Thank you. Anyone else want to add anything? Counselor Sullivan?
I would just say there were sixty-two thousand dollars under where they were last year.
Yeah, under.
Spending that, not a-
Yeah. Right, so they're sixty-two thousand dollars less problematic this year.
Right.
On overtime, Mike?
Yes.
Exactly.
Anyone else? Okay.
That's about ten.
So um uh is there a motion?
Good questions?
Yes, Counselor Bartley.
I, I'm sorry, I, I missed a meeting, but maybe if, did I hear you say there's a hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars left in the overtime budget? Did I hear you say that?
Um I'm pretty sure you said there's a hundred seventy-six on hand, and that seven fifty total should last through the winter, and that's the reason for these like, these transfers. But once again, I said this was a little over my head, and so I would not depend on me solely for the information on this item.
Okay, I just-
I would re-watch.
No, it's, it's my own fault for not, but it's a, th- this is, this is a very typical HPD transfer. How many we get just depends-
Right.
-on the overtime. So it's coming from money they already budgeted for dispatch, sergeants, patrolmen, and captains. So that's what the, that's what the police chief budgeted.
Right.
And now what the chief is saying, and this happens all the time, the chief is now saying, all the way into, we're not even three months into the fiscal year. Forget my budget. Forget my, forget my budget. I now want to take fif- I want to take all that money that I put for, for boots on the ground. I want to take two hundred fifty thousand dollars and put it into overtime. So never mind you city councilors that we did, and this happens every single fiscal year, and we do what? Rubber stamp it. That's what we do. Every time. So now the chief wants to give himself a pat on the back for being sixty-two thousand under, under, under budget? Well, that's great. Good for you. What you shouldn't give a pat, pat on the back for is you just said to us and the public, we, we need two hundred fifty thousand dollars for captains, patrol sergeant, and dispatch, when in fact that was inaccurate. We really needed it for overtime. Again, I'm not picking on this particular chief, but this happens every single year, three, four, even five times one year. So it's just, I'm, this, this is rhetorical. Uh that's all, just rhetorical. So I, I just, just for our own edification, so perhaps when, you know, budget comes around, you know, we always say that stuff, it never, it never happens, but um, but, you know, maybe we could have a little more straightforwardness in, at budget time. Thank you.
Thank you. Um anyone else?
Just to be clear, it does say the transfer is to HPD overtime, so it, I don't see anything hidden in the order. But I think anybody who's really interested should watch the meeting.
Okay.
And they could probably get a better explanation directly from Chief Keenan and Sergeant Zerheid's mouth.
Thank you. So I would entertain, I'm not seeing any other discussion.
A motion to receive the committee report and pass the second reading.
Second.
Movements have been made and seconded to receive the committee report and pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting in favor of item forty-six.
I, Rivera?
Let the roll.
He's not here.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Divine? Oh, sorry. Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yeah.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGraw Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Ten yeas, one absent.
Thank you. Uh with that, you have passed uh- Thank you. Uh, with that, you have passed, uh, forty-six. So forty-seven is the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that the city council approve, uh, fifteen thousand from the CPA budget to be used for small grants as outlined in the attached letter from the Hoyoke Community Preservation Committee. Recommended that the order be referred to the full council without recommendation. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. So, um, this was a very interesting discussion, but before I go over it, I would like to note that since it was sent to council with a two-to-two vote, which is a tie, it's my understanding that it probably should have stayed in committee, um, since that's a technically a no vote. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So then my motion would be to send this back to committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to send item forty-seven back to committee. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, Counselor McGrath Smith was a no. Um.
Item forty-eight?
Forty-eight is the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred a communication from Community Preservation Act Committee, uh, fiscal year twenty-six operating budget. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Givner?
Um, this, it's my understanding that this is, um, this is a communication to be received, so we didn't actually, um, vote on this, and there was a handout received that should be received. So I'd make a motion to receive.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Counselor Graney?
Yeah, just quickly, I believe at that meeting, uh, wasn't there, uh, an amount of money that they said was going to be turned over that the committee should know, that the council should know? I think there was a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars or something like that that was unencumbered, that was gonna go toward the budget.
Um, Counselor, oh, okay, I was gonna say, I saw Counsel Jordan's hand.
I'll defer of Counselor Givner, but I'll, I'll take a first crack. I believe what, uh, Mr. Ferreira said was that there was a carryover balance from last fiscal year of a hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. So that carryover gets added. They had eight hundred and ten thousand for this year, plus one oh eight left over from last year, so their budget for this year is gonna be nine hundred and nineteen thousand. And then what they reported to us is, they're putting sixty-five percent of it in their reserves, and they're allocating for now ten percent towards open space. These are about eighty-one grand apiece. Open space, historic resources, community housing, and then five percent for admin, which is about forty grand.
You're right. My math was wrong, but I think the public should know that. Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. And then I, are you good, Counselor Givner? Um, and then Counselor McGrath Smith?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to name that, um, I do think the public should know that, um, we're carrying over funding from one year to the next, and that has to do with fiscal conservatism on the board. We really believe that we need to be careful, that we don't earmark every last dollar, because we always, almost always, have a project that they go out to bid, they have, you know, their plan, and then they have to come back and say, "Actually, now that we're moving forward, this is actually what this is going to cost, and maybe we need to have wiggle room with them." Um, and those, of course, always come back here. Um, but a lot of it is also knowing that the budget starting next year will be a third less because of the surcharge being reduced. So last year, I think the group was particularly conservative in how they earmarked funding to you all, um, you know, hoping to make sure that it's a bit of a softer landing, so that, you know, I think, similarly, I think you'll see this year, I expect to see the same, folks will hold some funding back, thinking, knowing that last year, next year's gonna go down by a third, let's make it a softer transition, then suddenly sort of not really having funding people are expecting to see.
Madam Chair?
And the ten percent is what's required by state law. So, um, the reason why it's ten percent in open space, um, and, um, parks and rec, ten percent in housing, and ten percent in historic, is because that's required. For us to put it, everything else, sixty-five percent is that reserve where we can put it towards any of the, the three categories. Thank you.
Thank you. I have, um, Counselor Graney, and then Counselor Bacon?
Uh, Madam Chair, my, my, my position was simply to let the public know that there was a carryover, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bacon?
I just would like to note that that budget will only decrease by a third if our property values don't go up again by thousands of dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Uh, on the motion, which was to, uh, wait, forty, we're on forty-eight, and that was just a communication?
Just to receive.
To receive. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Forty-nine is the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that the city council consider for its approval the fiscal year twenty-six budget from the Hoyoke Community Preservation Committee. Note, this is the last budget that will be funded under the previous one point five percent sur- surcharge. Sur- I'm sorry, surcharge. Fiscal year twenty-seven budget will decrease by approximately one-third. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Givner?
Um, thank you, Madam President. Uh, this is, again, just a... Communication to receive, and we approved it. Okay? Am I wrong?
We have to vote to approve.
This is for, I think we have to, so forty, we're on forty-nine.
I, um, yeah, so maybe I misunderstood, because, um, this sur- surcharge was changed, and we already approved it, I thought.
So.
The rate, that's correct.
This is just the budget.
This is the budget.
Yes. So forty-nine is the actual budget.
My bad.
Motion to approve the budget as it was presented by the Community Preservation Committee?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the budget as it was communicated by the Community Preservation Committee. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. It's forty-nine. We already did fifty through, all the way up until fifty-two.
Motion.
So that was finance, and Counselor Givner, you're not done yet.
Can't get enough, huh?
Oh, we did do fifty-three.
Yeah, we did fifty-three.
Sorry. My apologies. Thank you. Fifty-four is, uh, the Committee on Development and Government Relations, uh, referred a special permit application for home occupation of Robert Rose at four fourteen Hillside Ave., Suite one-six-seven, for a custom fabrication shop. Recommended that the permit be given a leave to withdraw without prejudice. Counselor Givner?
I am looking for it. Four fourteen Hillside Ave. I'm looking for the item number on the DGR committee.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
That's alright.
And write it on here.
That would have been maybe, um, nevermind, don't listen to me.
Just to keep it going, I'll just make the motion to receive and adopt the committee report.
Motion has, yeah.
Yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Yeah.
To receive and adopt the committee report.
Yep.
Other discussion? It was item three on that agenda, Coco.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Counselor Coco.
I can help her if you want.
I, I.
Yeah.
I found my thousand notes. Thanks.
Thanks, counselors.
Um, yeah, so this was... There were a lot of concerns about this, but, um, at the end of the day, um, there, there were, uh, restrictions from four point eight point two in the zoning laws, apparently. Um, and it was based on like how many customers one can have, what kind of facility it is, um. But there were some concerns from the public about the location, and also the, um, the petitioner was... Um, I don't think the petitioner was present. I feel like that was part of the problem.
She wasn't?
Yep. Thank you. So the petitioner wasn't present, and there were concerns about the property. Um, and this was, um, yeah, so that's why we gave it a leave to withdraw, sorry.
Okay. Alright, got it. Phew. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So that was fifty-four. Fifty-five is the Committee on Development Government Relations, referred a special permit application for the home occupation of Alice Sussman and Tyrone, uh, O'Banner, uh, at one through nine Martin Street for a psychotherapy psychiatric outpatient mental health practice. Recommended that the permit be given a leave to withdraw without prejudice. Um, Counselor Givner, do you want to take that?
Um, yeah, so this was another case of, um, withdrawing without prejudice, and apparently the, the petitioner was looking to have, to pursue an alternative route, and there were some problems with, um, the public against it, but since she withdrew applica- application, it doesn't really matter.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, so the, the motions to receive and adopt the committee report.
Second.
Then under discussion, just real quick. So, uh, yeah, what happened here is that the, um, first of all, there was a great catch by the clerk's office. So on, on the notes, the clerk's office should be given a lot of credit for this. They applied, but there was really no plan to live there, and they're applying under home occupation. So then they got a lawyer involved, and the lawyer, uh, contacted, um, all sorts of individuals and said, uh, "We're, we're gonna withdraw it." And then we'll, we'll, we'll come up with a backup plan. So that's kind of where it lays out. Just my, my own personal take, they're, they're lovely people, had a chance to meet with them. I think they'd be a credit to, to anywhere. I'm glad they invested in Hoyoke. It's just the, the process of which they were trying to get in, um, wasn't exactly according to Hoyle. So that's it. Thank you.
And also that space, although it's all, it looks like it's all retail, I didn't realize it's, it's zoned residentially. So even though there's businesses in there, it's supposed to go through a home occupation permit, and apparently some of those are, um, like studio apartments or something. Um, so I thought that was really, it's a strange property, um.
It's grandfather.
Yeah.
They, they were, those properties, they're way before zoning laws were even a thing.
Yeah.
Alright, anyone else? Okay, so, um, that the permit be given leave to withdraw without prejudice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fifty-six was the Committee on Development Government Relations, uh, special permit application for home occupation of Kristen Fontaine for cottage kitchen to bake bread at one Meadow Street. Recommended that the special permit be granted with the following conditions, that the hours of operation would be Saturday, twelve to five P.M., that the application will provide their business certificate and their permit from the Board of Health. And that's it. Um, Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, this was a very long discussion about bread. Um, there was bread talk for a while, um, but it was, it was an interesting conversation, and, um, at the end of the day, this, this permit was for a very short window of business, or for operating hours, um, with individuals picking up bread at the individual's house. There was some pushback from the community. Others were in, um, support, and the main concern was traffic and parking, as always in Hoyoke. Um, so we reminded the petitioner that, um, although we were recommending this for approval, that it is an annual, uh, permit, so, you know, if there are issues regarding parking that affect her neighbors, that it could be a problem when we apply. So a motion to...
Thank you, Counsel, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Motion to receive the committee report?
I'll, I'll second.
Um, motion's been made and seconded to receive the committee report, um, with the conditions. Um, Counselor, under discussion, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna oppose this, uh, and really, the, the neighborhood opposition was very persuasive. Uh, I did recommend that night to the committee, they, they didn't adopt it, and that's perfectly fine, that they put a restriction on the applicant to make sure that anybody who's visiting be mandated to park in, in her driveway, um, because that was the main, that was the main concern. So that, that wasn't added on, and that's perfectly fine. So I, um, but cup- that coupled with the opposition from the community, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Okay?
Um, so, yeah, this was recommended unanimously for approval by the committee members.
Okay. Um, so with that, the, um, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to approve item fifty-six, the special permit, with the following conditions attached.
I Rivera?
Left the room.
He's on Zoom now, actually.
Yes. I apologize.
It's okay. Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Dev- uh, Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
No.
Jordan?
No.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
No.
Six yeas, five nays.
Okay. That doesn't pass.
Yeah, I think you need two-thirds.
Yeah, of the, um, we do need two-thirds, um, and we only have...
So, by adding the condition, will this change the vote? Can we still do that?
I don't think there was eleven people here, maybe I'm...
Where, um...
I think there was only ten people, right, because we're missing one.
Couple on Zoom, right?
We got Counsel, one, two.
Oh, Izzy's back on Zoom. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
One, but still, I mean, um, so, that's it, I guess? Did you make a motion? I'm sorry, I was counting.
I didn't. Hey, I guess I asked, um, or I guess I can make a motion to...
Reconsider.
To reconsider and add the, the parking condition.
Does it go back to committee, maybe, or?
No. It seems like the parking condition is the main thing, right?
Uh, if, I mean, I'd, do, would you rather send it to committee, or?
I'm fine with adding the parking condition. It's a dead-end street, so I didn't think it was that big of a deal. But, um, if it is, we can add that parking condition, that people who come to our home have to park in our driveway.
Okay.
My other thing is, I wanted to...
Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, if I may, Madam President, I wanted to also review the neighborhood opposition. That's basically my main concern. Generally, I vote for these, but if there's neighborhood opposition, then I tend to oppose them, which is what I'm doing right now, because, you know, that's the way it's, this is supposed to be, that if it's... The standard, in my opinion, generally is, your home is your home, it's not a business. And the other, and if, but on the other hand, we tend to give them, if, you know, nobody minds.
Motion to return to committee, then?
Yeah, I'd like to.
That's fine, and everyone's allowed to vote however they want to, so, um, we'll send it back to committee, uh, Counselor...
Talk to the neighbors some more.
Whatever works.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Just say, just a motion reconsider our action for, for the purpose of sending it back to committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to reconsider our actions for the purpose of sending it back to committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Fifty-seven?
I know. I'm just getting it all together. Uh, fifty-seven is, uh, the Committee on Development Government Relations, uh, special permit application for Christian, uh, Carde Guzman, uh, to construct a front-air driveway at two oh-three West Franklin Street. Recommended that the permit be granted. Counselor Givner? Fifty-seven. Oh, sorry, which, do you want, anyone else to?
I just need a moment to read. Thank you. It's, it's item six. Thank you. Um, so this was, oh, so this was, uh, pretty, it seemed pretty straightforward. Um, but the petitioner has a pretty interesting, um, driveway situation, or non-existent driveway situation. He's currently at that corner of West Franklin, and, um, I think that was, uh, West Franklin and Linden, if I'm, if I'm remembering correctly. I had pulled up a map, but I lost it. Um, but we approved this because, um, he had good reason. He's also reached out to the Board of Public Works, who've, who've, um, and knows that he needs the driveway, um, the access permit from them. So they have said that that will be fine for him to receive that, and, um, he will have permission to curb cut and basically create a driveway on the side of his house, um, just because of the corner lot situation, and it's for safety reasons mostly. He has children, and he made a pretty good case of why he wants to do this. It's a well-kept house. It's a well-kept house, it's just in a problematic parking area. So, um, we, as a committee, approved this unanimously.
Thank you. Um, I saw Counselor Jordane first and then Counselor Bartley and Graney, but I got...
I just wanted to, if I may, Madam President, have a courtesy question to the Ward Six Counselor, to Counselor Anderson Burgos. I just wanted, one, that he felt comfortable with this and that, two, um, did he receive any neighborhood opposition to this? I would be interested in Juan's opinion of this. If he's supportive.
I'm sorry, I just went to the restroom for a second and I heard my name as I'm coming in. Counselor Jordane, would you mind repeating yourself?
Yes, please, Juan. My question was, because you're the Ward Counselor, I wanted to defer to you on, um, relative to item number fifty-seven, and I know you live close by. Have you received any opposition relative to the gentleman doing this front yard driveway? And do you feel comfortable with it?
Thank you, um, thank you for mentioning that. I respect you, Counselor Jordane. So, yes, um, I have been speaking with this constituent. Um, he does have a lot of concerns. Um, we had a lengthy conversation, um, and, yeah, this, this would be appropriate, um, and would fix a lot of the problems that he's currently facing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Graney?
Yeah, uh, I think part of the petition was that the driveway has to be on the Linden Street side. I guess these corner lots have two, you know, two addresses or something, but it has to be on the Linden Street side.
That, I believe that's correct, yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Bartley?
I was just gonna say, uh, some more excellent guidance by the clerk's office. This is what we want. Makes everything here super smooth.
We love to see it. Okay, um, on the motion to adopt the committee report and grant the, um, uh, grant item fifty-seven, uh, the clerk will call the roll? That's like a question, but a statement, sorry.
We know what you meant.
I know. You're right.
Aye, Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Romballetti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, with that, you have done fifty-seven. We did fifty-eight? We did fif-teen, uh, no, we didn't. The one after that, sorry. Okay, so fifty-nine was, uh, the Committee on Development Government Relations. Um, in order to declare parcel, uh, in the Hoyoke Assessor's map, uh, one forty-four, block zero-zero, parcel zero-five-seven, East Hampton Road as surplus property. Um, the city has been approached by an abutter looking to purchase the property to combine the lots and build a home on the same. Uh, the property is vacant land and currently assessed at eight thousand five hundred. Recommended that the order be adopted, acknowledging that the property is no longer needed for a public purpose. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, yeah, so this was interesting. So the, the, the abutter would like to purchase this property, but, um, apparently it was taken by eminent domain during the building of ninety-one, so I thought that was like a interesting tidbit. Um, and they have been talking to the planning board, um, the, it's a, my understanding that the, a abutter sale will not go out to public bid. Um, and it was recommended that the, the purchaser would join the lots, um, just to make it easier for, for the way the property is divided up. Um, I'm not a planning person, so I don't quite understand that. It's not a requirement, it was just something that they had, um, suggested to the, the person interested. But, yeah, um, as long as it's not, no longer needed for public purpose, it's not a problem for the abutter to purchase it. So we recommended that it be approved.
Thank you. Counselor Bacon and then Counselor Bartley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just curious, is the purchaser paying the assessed value or another price?
Um, so at this time... At this time, we're trying to declare the parcel as a surplus, as a surplus property only.
Oh.
Um, the city's been approached by the abutter.
We're not doing the sale, okay.
Right, so this is to approve, creating surplus, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, there is an interested party, um, but this is just declaring surplus.
Thank you. Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, those are all good questions, uh, thank you, Madam President. So the, uh, the, the situation with this is, uh, obviously, I, well, certainly I, I support it because it puts a vacant parcel, uh, a non-tax parcel back on a tax roll, if, if in fact we go ahead with it. Though I, the land value per the city records that I have is ninety-one hundred dollars, so, uh, whether it's eighty-five hundred and ninety, but on the city website it says ninety-one hundred dollars, not eighty-five hundred dollars. But we'll, we'll see what happens when it, when they come up with a sale contract relative to this. And the last point is that because the value is under a certain dollar amount, that there's no need pursuant to state law to put it out to public bid. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, on the motion that the, uh, to accept the committee report and adopt six, oh, sorry, fifty-nine. Um, all those in favor? Any, oh, a roll call vote? My apologies.
Okay.
Um, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to, uh, adopt fifty-nine.
Aye, Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Romballetti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, so we did, with that, you have passed fifty-nine. Uh, we did sixty already. Um, sixty-one is the Committee on Development Government Relations, uh, that the city council approve the resolution for the certified project application and special tax assessment agreement with AM Lithology Corporation for the purpose of the company's property acquisition and expansion in Hoyoke. Um, the acquisition, expansion and STA apply to the following, one hundred Appleton Street, one-ten Appleton Street, Appleton Street Parcel, zero-ten. Um, recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Givner?
Um, thank you, Madam President. So this was really interesting. Um, A&amp;M Lithography Corp- Corporation has a base in, or has a facility in Hoyoke as well as in Chickaby, and they are looking at a parcel in Hoyoke so that they can basically, um, have more space in Hoyoke and eventually their intention would be to completely move from Chickaby to Hoyoke. Um, and they are basically investing in their own expansion. So there's a five-year program being proposed, um, and, uh, they've already, they're, so they used the same program initially when they started in Hol- in Hoyoke, um, in two thousand seven, so this is not new to them, the process is not new to them, and they've already proven to be successful, uh, in investing in Hoyoke and being successful as a company. So, um, yeah, we thought it was a great proposal and it's a great tool for OPEC to use to get new business and grow businesses in Hoyoke. So we recommended it for approval.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Sullivan and then Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, just also speaking in favor of this, uh, um, AM Litho is occupying the former laminated papers building. Uh, they've been a fantastic employer, they're really a growing business, and what they'll be taking over is, uh, almost, uh, so fortunate for the city because Ed Iran is leaving the city and these people be moving in right on their coattails as they move out. So, I'm very much in favor of this one.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I gotta thank, uh, Counselor Sullivan, because he really kind of made this clear for me as to what, what's happening here. It's something we, that, that I want to get behind. We're, we're talking about almost five acres of land. Um, and to have this be dormant for any period of time wouldn't be the best, but now it looks like it's not going to be the case. So that's something OPEC should be very proud of, using this, uh, tool, this, the STA has been, uh, been pretty much a winner, uh, at least in my tenure here. It's been a good way to, uh, to help, help the business. It does not hurt the city. It, it, this is, this is not hurt, hurtful to the city at all. And it allows them to come into the city and have incremental growth and incremental tax assessment on the new growth. And it's, it's a nice tool to use. So, um, I'm hopeful that this remains a winner and becomes a job creator and, uh, and makes a very important part of the city even more active. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Um, I just wanted to add, there was a communication today from, uh, Aaron Vega, and he mentioned that there was some more good news for AM Litho, that they were awarded state credits to support their expansion here. And this, along with the city STA, is creating a great package for them to retain at AM Litho and support their expansion, so.
Nice, thank you. So on the motion, uh, that the order be adopted, um, the clerk will call the roll? If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of adopting item sixty-one.
Aye, Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney? Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Romballetti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Ten yeas, one absent.
Okay, with that, you have, uh, passed sixty-one, approved that. Um, sixty-two is, uh, the Committee on Development Government Relations, that the city council authorized the sale of, um, the one oh six Pine Street, uh, to Alan Schneider or his nominee for five thousand eight hundred dollars, um, after the property was declared surplus in February of twenty nineteen. Um, the city received a response from Mr. Schneider as the only responding abutter. Um, the property is valued under the procurement threshold, recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. So, um, this is a parcel that has been declared surplus and after city sent notices to the abutters, um, this person was the only one who responded. So he came in and mentioned that he owns the building next door, he'd be interested in, um, purchasing that building there, that's, um, or it's no building there anymore. If you look on Google, there's still a, a building on the space, but it has in the meantime been demolished, so he'd be buying a empty lot. Um, and, yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Bartley and then Counselor Bacon?
So, and so the chair is absolutely on point with this one then, and then the order is very clear and it matches what's the, the assessed value in the, in the computers. So fifty-eight hundred dollars is the sale price and the assessed value pursuant to the assessor records is fifty-eight hundred dollars. So, again, it puts a dead dormant parcel back on a tax roll, and I think that's the point of this game. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bacon?
That was my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
There you go. Anyone else? Counselor Jordane?
I'm just gonna point out, of course, we're getting the fifty-eight and I'm gonna vote for this, but one wonders who paid the demo, probably back taxes, I don't even know. You, you wonder on some of these parcels. It's, it's, there's always a interesting story behind a lot of these, that the city comes up short often on, on many of these, but the past is the past and we move forward, so we wish them good luck.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? On the motion to adopt the committee report, um, the clerk will call the roll? Uh, if you vote yes, you are voting to approve the sale of this parcel.
Aye, Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Romballetti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Ten yeas, one absent.
All right, with that, you've passed, um, sixty-two. Uh, sixty-three is the Committee on Development Government Relations, to whom was referred an order from the Department of Conservation and Recreation, nine-five-seven Homestead, Chapter sixty-one A notice, recommend that the right of first refusal option not be exercised. Counselor Givner?
Um, thank you, Madam President. So I have notes here, um, let's see. Well, originally we had voted unanimously, um, or the Hoyoke Con- Conservation Committee had voted unanimously at their, uh, eight fourteen meeting to recommend that the mayor and the city council formally decline to exercise the city's MGL sixty-one A. So, um, this has been going back and forth and as we know, it's now been withdrawn anyway. So, um, I think, um, that we received this as a communication and recommended it to just be, um, received.
Okay, Counselor Sullivan?
I could be wrong on this, but...
Am I reading the wrong thing?
Yeah, I think this one's just a, a sliver of land, um, up off of Homestead.
Okay.
Uh, the, the one we, uh, we did earlier was, uh...
That was different, that was on Mountain Road?
Different one, so this...
Right, Mountain?
Yeah.
Was that Mountain Road?
Sorry.
Okay.
So, okay, I will start over. So...
Forget she said any of that.
Yeah, forget any of that. Upon review of this notice, uh, of intent to sell, the Hoyoke Conservation Committee voted unanimously seven to zero at their August fourteenth meeting to recommend that the mayor and city council formally decline to exercise the city's MGL sixty-one A option, which would allow the sale of the proposed, um, of the proposed and proceed with due haste. The land in question has already been developed and as it exists would not be eligible for sixty-one A, as there is now a residential structure on the property. And while the Conservation Commission recognizes the importance of preserving agricultural land in Hoyoke, exercising this right of first refusal would inflict more damage than benefits. So that was the communication.
Okay, thank you. Um, Counselor Bacon?
Yes, thank you. This was a property sale in Ward Five by the owner who is in need of assistance in an alternate living place. And so the sale went through, but then it was discovered that the technical aspects around the Chapter sixty-one A, which seems to be our favorite topic lately, um, had never been addressed. And they asked that we would do it this way to save the time.
Got you.
Because of that ninety-day thing and all that, is, is my understanding.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to add? Okay, so the, um, what was, is the motion was to adopt the committee report?
Um, adopt the recommendation from the Conservation Commission?
Adopt the recommendation from the Conservation Commission to not exercise the right of first refusal.
Second.
Um, all those, uh, this is a roll call vote. Uh, the clerk will call the roll. Um, if you vote yes, you are voting to, uh, adopt the committee report to not exercise the right to vote. First refusal. There we go. Aye, Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Only got one vote, Izzy.
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, with that, you have approved sixty-three. Thank you, Counselor Givner, for all of the updates that.
No one else has an update? This is ridiculous.
It's the Givner Show tonight.
Yeah, it was. So sixty-four through sixty-nine.
Suspend the rules, take all those injured on duties as a package, and pass the first reading?
Second.
Oh, sorry, that would be sixty-eight, my bad.
Sixty-eight.
So the motion was made and seconded to suspend the rules and take items sixty-four through sixty-eight as a package and take final action this evening and pass the first reading. I'll read them briefly into the record. Sixty-four, they're all transfer requests for injured on duty. And sixty-four is for nine hundred forty-four dollars and ninety-one cents from firefighters to injured on duty. Sixty-five is nineteen thousand five hundred forty-four and five dollars, or five cents, sorry, from sergeants and patrolmen to injured on duty. Sixty-six is for twelve thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars and eleven cents from fire captain, lieutenant, and firefighter to injured on duty. Sixty-eight is twenty-one thousand six hundred forty-three dollars and fifty-three cents from lieutenants, sergeants, and patrolmen to injured on duty. And sixty-eight is eighteen thousand four hundred fifty dollars and thirty-nine cents from sergeants and patrolmen to injured on duty. The motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion to pass the second reading? All those in favor?
Aye.
Am I losing it?
Yeah, roll call, roll call.
Roll call vote. I got the ordinance and this to mess up. So the Clerk will call the roll. And if you vote yes, you're voting to approve these transfer requests.
Aye Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, with that, you've passed up until sixty-eight, so now we're on sixty-nine.
Finance.
Send to finance. Sixty-nine is that the city council accept the Mass DOT Local Bottleneck Reduction Program, three ninety, three hundred ninety thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars and thirty cents, no match. Send to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seventy is filed by Counselor Devine, that the city designate four parking spots in front of the police department as police business only.
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seventy-one, or do you want to do seventy-one and seventy-two to? So seventy-one, or all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seventy-one is, they're both to declare surplus property. One is five sixty-nine South Bridge Street. The other is another parcel on South Bridge Street. Both are being filed to declare surplus property, refer to Development Government Relations.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Seventy-three is filed by Counselors Jordan and Devine, that a proclamation be issued by the city council recognizing William, Ronnie Collmore for his forty-eight years of service to the city, that we share this proclamation with him at the street naming ceremony for him.
Make it unanimous.
Yes.
Sure.
Is that okay with everyone?
Yes, if you would.
Is that okay with the makers?
That would be wonderful. And if you would kindly adopt that this evening, please.
Second.
Sure.
And the sign has.
Can I actually be added to that? I'm sorry, I don't mean to.
Yeah, we just, she made a, she made a nominee, or a motion to be unanimous.
Thank you, guys.
Jeff, you want to be added?
Um, hold on one second. I just lost it. Okay, and that we vote on that and adopt tonight?
Yes, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And we're warming up. The sign's being made, just so you know, and then the DPW's gonna put it out. And soon as we get the word that Ron's feeling up to it, then we'll put it all together. So, and you'll all be invited.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, getting there? Seventy-four was filed by Counselors Jordan and Devine, order that no large commercial vehicles allowed be installed at the beginning of Linden and Hampton at the end of the Muller Bridge off-ramp. Would you?
I would ideally like to have this received and adopted and sent over to the DPW, if there's no objection to that.
Yeah, sounds good. Receive, adopt, and send over to the DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seventy-five was filed by Counselors McGrath Smith and Jordan, create an ordinance to match Council Rule ten B, that the following information must be submitted to council with every loan or bond order, statement.
Ordinance.
Send to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seventy-five was filed by Counselor Jenny Rivera, order that the DPW and city engineer take necessary steps to install additional stop signs, it looks like on Cabot and Race, and Sergeant and Race. Send to ordinance?
Yes, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Seventy-seven, we did, right, yeah?
Yes, we did, yeah.
Seventy-eight?
Finance?
Is sent to finance. Seventy-eight was filed by Counselor Devine. It is a transfer request of one hundred thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars from CAFO to Mayor's Contracted Services, sent to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seventy-nine is an order filed by Counselor Bacon, add a rule that any city councilor named by a speaker during public comment has two minutes to respond at the end of public speak, sent to charter and rules. All those adding.
We want our meetings longer.
Hold that thought. My apologies. Counselor Greeney, I'll add you, if that's okay. Counselor Bacon?
Sure, sure.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eighty was filed by Counselor Bartley, that the city council amend Chapter eighty-six of the city's ordinances to allow two-wheeled vehicles to park multiple like-sized vehicles in any single public parking space as the engineer may determine.
Ordinance.
Ordinance?
Yeah, Madam President?
Counselor Bartley?
Offer friendly amendment to my own order, please?
Sure.
It turns out that there's a state law on point on this. So I just put a sentence in there, and Jeff, I'll say it real slow, that the city council consider adoption of Chapter forty, Section twenty-two A of the Mass General Laws.
That's easier.
Got it. So.
Had to research it.
I said it might be easier.
Might be.
So the amendment would be that the city council do the adoption of Chapter forty, Section twenty-two A of MGL.
Correct.
Okay, send to ordinance?
As amended.
All those in favor, as amended? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Eighty-one is filed by Counselor Bartley, order that the DPW and mayor rescind the recent ban on their collection of recycling. Receive and adopt, refer to DGR for follow-up. Counselor?
Can DGR?
Sounds good.
Please also send a copy to the Recycling Committee?
Copy to.
Something they've talked about a lot.
What committee?
Recycling Committee.
Sure.
Okay, great, thanks. All right, send to DGR and Recycling Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eighty-two is filed by Counselor Bartley, that the city engineer and Law Department review the definition of motorized scooter. Refer to ordinance committee, the Law Department, city engineer, and Parking Advisory Board.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eighty-three is filed by Counselor Bartley, that an ordinance be passed to allow those businesses who can, whose collection of recycling and waste was recently banned to be reinstituted. Refer to ordinance and copy to Public Works.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then eighty-four is filed by Counselor Bartley, order that the city start the process to review the petition to install speed humps on Castor Street, petition attached. Refer to city engineer and ordinance.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we did late file eighty-five.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, everyone.